Good evening and welcome to the June 10th. The Governoring Body. If you will give your attention to Councilman Coe, I call this meeting to order. He will provide the invocation. Stand as you are able and then remain standing for the Fledge of Aides.
Just a little over five years ago, I lost my father. He was a master plumber and tonight I'll be reading the plumber's prayer. Lord, thank you for this job, the blessings it provides. May you watch over me this day and keep me safe from harm. Create in me a willing spirit and happy heart. Grant me the ambition to work hard and give me the strength to finish what I have started. May my hands always be prepared to help lighten another's load. And finally, Lord, remind me that quality of my work is a reflection of you too. Trosa ramne, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on, we'll have a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmembers, Hiller?
Here.
Christina Valdivia-Akala?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Banks?
Here.
Cal?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Hofer?
Here.
And Mayor Padilla?
Here.
Okay, all right, we have 10 present.
Okay. Next on the agenda, item two, Madam Clerk?
Two is a certificate of recognition for the Topeka Renaissance Festival.
Okay. If I could have Angela Kearney, and I bet I can pick out who Yellowbeard is and Boogaloo is. If you'll join me up here, I appreciate it.
Yep. Think you know who we are.
Okay. Well, this is a little bit unusual and fun tonight, so we're going to have a first annual event. And in recognition of this, I want to read it as it was given to me. So, certificate of recognition for Topeka Renaissance Festival. Hear ye, hear ye, let it be known throughout the realm of the city of Topeka, in the year of our Lord 2025, doth declare and recognize the joyous commencement of the first annual Topeka Renaissance Festival, to begin on June 21st through June 22nd, 2025. Ye ask, what is a Renaissance Festival? A medieval fair. It is an event that aims to recreate and celebrate the culture, arts, and activities of the European Renaissance period, which spanned roughly from the 14th to the 17th century. Let the spirit of chivalry, merriment, and noble celebration doth awaken once more in the hearts of our fair citizens. It is right ye honor the arts, music, craftsmen, and valor of ages past, bringing forth a gathering of knights, jesters, maidens, and merchants within the bounds of our beloved city. This grand festival shall serve as a time for community, revelry, and learning, drawing forth visitors from far and near to partake in this noble endeavor being held at 1901 North Kansas Avenue. Now therefore, I, Michael Apadia, Mayor of the City of Topeka, do hereby recognize the city's first Renaissance Festival and call upon all citizens and travelers to step back in time, to don their finest garb, raise their voices in song, and celebrate with mirth and good cheer. Let the banners fly, let the trumpets sound, and let the festivities begin. And witness thereof, I do hereby affix my official signature and official seal of the City of Topeka, Kansas, on this 10th day of June 2025. So, congratulations.
Huzzah! Huzzah! [applause] We've been working about a year and a half on this, and believe it or not, we've got people, vendors, merchants, artists, entertainers, coming from six states in what we've counted so far, 58 cities, all over America, basically, and it's really exciting to bring this, and we hope all of you attend. Huzzah!
Congratulations. Sounds like a lot of hard work. Congratulations. Dobler?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Okay, that was fun. Hey, Madam Clerk? Appointments.
All right. A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Gray Debacker to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term ending June 20th, 2027. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of John Dietrich to the Washburn University Board of Regents for a term ending June 30th, 2029. And C is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Denise Selby Koch to the Noto Business Improvement District Advisory Board to fill a term ending June 13th, 2027.
Okay, we've heard appointments as read. Is there a motion in the body to approve? There's a motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, seconded by Councilman Miller. We're ready to vote.
Okay, we have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your vote. And my friend John Dietrich is in the audience today with his lovely wife. If you can stand that, John, so we could recognize you and thank you for your continued service for Washington University. [applause] Thank you, John.
Have a great evening. Appreciate it.
Okay, move on to item four, Madam Clerk.
All right. We have a presentation for the 2025 to 2022 to 2025 Citywide Housing Investment Summary Report.
Taken away. All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Governing Body. So, back in, let me see here, it's been a minute, back in May, our team came together, housing and planning and development, to provide this presentation to the Policy and Finance Committee, and wanted to bring it forth to council so that you would all have the opportunity to learn a little bit more and ask questions. So I'm going to kick it off and just do a little run-through of what we're going to talk about tonight, and then hit some of the high notes of the citywide housing study. And then I'm going to turn it over to Quinn Cole, our Senior Management Analyst, and then Carrie Higgins, Housing Services Director. All right, you're going to have to click before. Thanks. Okay, so, starting off with a little bit of an overview of the citywide housing study, then we'll give a, we have a lot of acronyms in here between Carrie's Housing Services Programs and then our state and local incentive programs, so we'll do a little program glossary to touch on those. And then we'll be trying to swiftly go through an overview, district by district, 1 through 9, of all of the programs from 2022 to 2025 that impacted your districts, so you can see a little bit more about that. And then we'll give a citywide overall summary. Okay, so, just tying this all back to the 2020 citywide housing study, so, one of the things that was called out in that study was really defining the need. What is Topeka missing? And as you can see from the list here, it's a little bit of everything when it comes to housing, everything from market rate to missing middle infill, which Planning Commission has been working really hard on to make some amendments and changes to our zoning code to try to promote infill development, new single-family housing, and then things that Carrie's team can really help with, too, so the affordable housing side, rehab and renovation, where we can use our HUD grant funds. But overall, looking at the demand by type over the next 20 years, you'll see it's a breakdown that equates to about 14,000 units of demand over the next 20 years. So no doubt that we have a lot of work to do.
All right, so getting right into the presentation, before we go, here's our program glossary. We've got all of our programs sorted based on their eligibility requirements, and so our first category is our income-based programs, so these are a lot of our HUD programs you can see on the list. These look to give support to families in the community that are at or below a certain AMI threshold. We also have our location-based programs. You can see them, they're Sort Dreams and the NRP. These are both related to locations within the city. We have targeted areas in the Neighborhood Health Map that really shows where we want to target investment. And then in our other, these are just regular programs run by the Planning and Development Services, so we have new build permits that were issued, our RHID program, and also from the state, we counted our Lytech programs.
Okay, so for District 1, the green box you see at the top gives you a breakdown of all of the different programs and the number of homes we were able to assist in this district. And then the picture on the top-left corner is a Cornerstone New Duplex for their Transitional Housing Program, which is a six-month lease and a stepping stone for unsheltered individuals to get into housing.
And then for our project spotlight in District 1, we have our most recently passed RHID program, which was the Union at Tower District. For those of you that are familiar with the program, you might be wondering why it says 190 units, but that is because there's actually, one of the three buildings is across the border into District 3, I believe, and so we just, 190 are in District 1.
Okay, for District 2, again, you'll see a list of the different programs and number of homes we were able to serve in District 2.
And another project we wanted to spotlight is another RHID project in District 2. This was from Gen 3 Construction, the Riverstone subdivision by Gen 3 Construction. It created for-sale workforce housing, 15 units.
For District 3, the top-left picture that you see is another example of Cornerstone Housing. Cornerstone is one of our CHODOs, which is a community housing development organization that we partner with to increase our affordable housing supply in the community. This is a duplex from Cornerstone, the second one on the street that is two to three bedrooms, and it was funded in part by the City of Topeka's Dreams Program and ARPA funds.
Yeah, and then the photo on the bottom-right is of one of the brand-new duplexes that came from our first RHID project that got passed in 2023. That was the East Gate subdivision by AMP Property Development. They created 21 new four-bed duplexes for rent to fall in the workforce housing category.
For District 4, both of these pictures are of our Toto House and our Toto Program, which is a partnership with Housing and Credit Counseling. So this is an example of a single mom of six kids becoming a first-time homeowner that might not have otherwise been able to. The program put in about 30,000 into the home on a new roof, flooring, paint, and a new HVAC system to make the home move-in ready.
And then as far as Planning and Development Services, there's not a lot of incentive activity happening in District 4, but the most popular subdivisions getting new permits are Rockfire, that had 15 permits in this time period out of those 42, and then Aquarian Acres and Capricorn Woods are both approaching near build-out.
For District 5, both of these pictures that you see are of Scent Homes. Scent is another one of our CHODOs. The top-left photo is of their net-zero home, which means that the home will generate as much energy as it uses over the course of the year, which will significantly reduce utility costs for the family.
And in this district, there was a Lytech project. It was Southern Hills Senior Living. It received a 4% Lytech and created 24 new units for seniors in the city.
For District 6, the images that you see here are for another Toto Home with our Toto Program. The first-time homebuyers with this is a family of three, and the program put in about 30,000 in upgrading the kitchen, the bathroom, flooring, and then installing a new sewer line that you see here as well.
And in District 6, this is actually our only landlocked district, so there's not a lot of new subdivision development coming online, just a lot of sporadic infill throughout the area. But when you think about what's there, it makes sense, because you have the VA, you have Washburn, a lot of it is in the Shunga Floodplain, and so there's just not room for new housing development outside of the infill we're seeing.
For District 7, the images that you see are an example of our emergency repair program. So this is a home owned by a 65-year-old widow who is living on a fixed income, and her sewer line collapsed. Thankfully, she qualified for the emergency repair program, and we were able to cover and replace sewer lines, sump pump, and water lines for her.
And then most of these permits, 16 of them, were for the Misty Harbor Number 5 subdivision, and that is approaching full build-out.
Okay, for District 8, the top-left image that you see is an example of our emergency repair program. This home was owned by a young couple with a five-year-old son. The husband is disabled, so they're living on a reduced income, and their furnace went out a week before Thanksgiving. They had a company come out multiple times, but they couldn't afford to fully fix the issue, so it kept going out again. But they qualified for the emergency repair program. We were able to replace the furnace and fix the electrical issues, so that they did not have to worry about going without heat over the winter.
And then in the bottom-right corner, we have pictured a rendering of the upcoming RHID project that was passed earlier this year, Sherwood Professional Park. This is bringing online 20 new units, 10 duplexes, and they're going to fall in the market rate rental category.
And for District 9, the top-left picture of the window is an example of our weatherization program. So this is a home with two adults that are living on disability, who take care of their grandchild, and the weatherization program was able to provide new windows and doors to stop some of the drafts in the home, and then also lower the utility bills, which is important for a family living on a fixed income.
And I could take this last one. So this is a unique addition in that this is a completely privately-funded project, but eight infill homes, single-family, that fell into the workforce category, that were done without any type of incentive or intervention from us, so I thought that was a good project to highlight as well. So I think really the takeaway that I wanted to give here was that while all districts might not be the right fit to be able to qualify for the types of programs that Housing Services has to offer, and they may not also be the right fit for RHID programs, but I think when you look at it and we put all of our programs together, you're really seeing that district-wide or city-wide across the city, that there is housing and there is rehab and repair that's happening across all districts. So this slide just provides a summary of that, so to save you all some math, that is 403 properties that were touched by Housing Services in that timeframe citywide, and then 615 new units. Okay, so I'm not even going to pretend to try to talk through this, but what I will tell you is that we have a really awesome person named Travis Lathrop in our GIS department, and we were able to work with Travis to provide him Excel spreadsheets of the list of all of Carrie's programs during this timeframe, and then all of our permits, and he was able to build out portals that indicate what type of program was used, where the location is, some details like that. I would be happy to send those links to you and offer to take time to sit down and walk through them, show you how to use the portal, and then our goal is to continue, there's a little bit of a delay, but continue to try to upload them, maybe it's, you know, quarterly if we can, and so that you have, you know, if you get a question about where projects happen, you have that at your fingertips. But it's not public, but you can definitely access it if you're connected to the city server. And then we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation and the information. Any questions from the body?
Yes, thanks.
Thanks. Yeah, you got it.
I want to thank you for the presentation, because I think it gives us a nice visual and understanding where that goes throughout the city, should anyone be concerned that it's just happening in one part of the county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is our consent agenda. Madam Clerk?
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Marcus Miller, granting Westboro Homeowners Association exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 9.45.150 concerning noise prohibitions. B are the minutes of the joint city-county meeting of June 3rd, 2025, and the regular governing body meeting of June 3rd, 2025. And then we have three applications that we sent via email, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Further consent agenda is read by the clerk. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor. Seconded by Councilwoman Ortiz. We're ready to vote.
We have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Congratulations. Sounds like a lot of hard work. Congratulations. Dobler?
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, that was fun. Hey, Madam Clerk? Appointments.
All right. A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Gray Debacker to the Board of Mechanical Examiners for a term ending June 20th, 2027. B is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of John Dietrich to the Washburn University Board of Regents for a term ending June 30th, 2029. And C is a board appointment recommending the appointment of Denise Selby Koch to the Noto Business Improvement District Advisory Board to fill a term ending June 13th, 2027.
Okay, we've heard appointments as read. Is there a motion from the body? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor. Seconded by Councilwoman Ortiz. We're ready to vote.
The motion carries. Oh. I apologize, that was my, I must not have.
I assumed you wanted to vote yes, though, for the record.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay. Next agenda item, action items. Madam Clerk?
A is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, setting the public hearing to consider the advisability of establishing a community improvement district at 30th and Topeka Boulevard pursuant to KSA 12-6A26.
Mr. State Manager?
Thank you. Members of the Governing Body, Rianna Freeman, our Director of Planning and Development and Services will lead us through this item.
Thank you. Yes, so in front of you, you have a resolution. The resolution is to simply set the public hearing for July 15th for a proposed CID, and this is for approximately 2.66 acres located at northeast Topeka Boulevard and 30th Street for BDC 30th and Topeka LLC.
Okay, any questions? For the item, is there a motion by the council, please? Motion to approve by Councilwoman Ortiz, seconded by Councilman Banks, and we're ready to vote.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Item 6B.
B is a resolution introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, providing notice of a public hearing concerning the establishment of tax increment financing redevelopment district within the city, 30th and Topeka Boulevard pursuant to KSA 12-1770, as amended.
Okay. Mr. State Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Governing Body, Rianna Freeman, our Director of Planning and Development Services will lead us through this item.
Thank you. So similarly to our last item, currently today, the northeast corner of Topeka Boulevard and 30th Street does not fall within an existing TIF district, so what we're looking for tonight is to set a resolution to be able to set a public hearing for July 15th, the same night as the CID, to entertain the creation of a district.
Okay. Heard the need as read. Is there a motion from the body? Motion to approve by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilman Banks, so we're ready to vote.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you for your vote. Thank you, Rianna. Action item C. Madam Clerk?
C is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez concerning claims made by the city authorizing the city attorney to initiate lawsuits up to $35,000, creating Section 3.35.070 of the Topeka Municipal Code.
Mr. State Manager? State Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. As discussed last week, this is an ordinance that was initially inspired by conversations with Councilman Miller and requests about how we recover in certain incidents of property. This is a limited ordinance that would be passed under Home Rule authority that would allow the city attorney to initiate lawsuits to recover damages to city property in limited cases of tort and contract law. As we discussed last week, the most common examples are when a car hits city property, stop signs, light posts, medians, lots of other things that cars like to hit in Topeka, and then as well as when contractors damage property. This would only be in limited situations of under 35,000 in damages, and it would not apply to all those unique things like protest petitions or other types of things that would need to come before the Governing Body. I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for the city attorney, this item? Seeing none, is there a motion from the body? Okay, motion to approve by Councilman Miller, and my screen went blank, seconded by Councilman Dobler. We're ready to vote.
The mayor doesn't vote in this one.
Okay.
Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to action item D. Madam Clerk?
D is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez concerning parking in the downtown central business district, amending Sections 10.05.010, 10.6320, 330, 340, 150, 160, 200, 220, 230, 010, 060, 170, 180, 210, 350, 360, and 370 of the Topeka Municipal Code, and repealing original sections.
Okay. Mr. State Manager?
Thank you. Members of the Governing Body, Jason Tryon, our Deputy Director of Public Works will lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Governing Body. So this item has been before you on a couple of occasions, and then it was referred back to the Policy and Finance Committee. So after review by that committee, what we are recommending tonight would be to update the code language for a few different things. One would be to eliminate references to College Hill. The second would be removing references to coin and physical meters or other terms which are not consistent with how we practice today. The third would be to strengthen the language to prevent leapfrogging, which is parking in one time zone and moving to another time zone. It would be to replace 15-minute cones with designated sign spaces for pickup and delivery parking, to increase the price of our 10-hour meters, both hourly and monthly, to codify that Kansas Avenue will not have paid parking, and to institute paid parking on the 100 blocks east and west of Kansas Avenue between 6th and 10th, and the effective date of that would be January 1st, 2026. And with that, I would take any questions that you have.
Okay. Have any questions on this item from Jason? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion from Councilman Dobler to approve? And a seconded by Councilman Banks. Ready to vote? Oh, actually, wait a minute. There's a comment by Councilwoman Miller. There's a comment by Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you. I just want to reach out to the merchants, everybody that's put a lot of discussion and thought into this. This is a hard move to take. It's another step toward that downtown that we've looked for, and certainly, everybody has got my commitment to working with them on that priority of marketing and messaging internally, as well as with the community, to make this work. It's going to be a big step, and appreciate the council's hard work on it, too, and it'll take all of us to help everybody make the transition. Thank you.
Again, motion to approve by Councilman Dobler, and second by Councilman Banks. We're ready to vote. Alan's not voting. I don't want Marcus to hit me.
Okay, we have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Action item E. Madam Clerk?
E is an ordinance introduced by City Manager Dr. Robert M. Perez, providing for a non-exclusive franchise to Tex Inc. to operate an ambulance service within the city of Topeka until December 31, 2026.
Mr. State Manager?
Thank you. Mayor and members of the governing body, Amanda Stanley, our City Attorney, will lead us through this item.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. This item was before you last week for discussion. It is an ambulance franchise for one of the transport companies that transport inside and inner facilities. You heard from the owner last week, who gave an overview of his company.
Any questions on this item? Okay, is there a motion to approve by Deputy Mayor? Second by Councilman Miller. And we're ready to vote.
We have 10 yes. The motion carries.
Move on to action item 7A, or non-action item 7A, excuse me. Before we get into discussion, we do have a couple people signed up for this item. If we could have... First is Danielle Twimlow.
Thank you. I was actually trying to sort what I really wanted to say, and I think that that kind of summarizes the fact that this is an incredibly frustrating process to under...
Would you like more time?
A little bit. Thank you. No, no, you're fine. So pulling even back some of the information that we have over a year ago about the change from it being originally called, you know, the readiness to serve, and what was that definition versus, you know, the base rate that everyone is required to have. And there's just been a lot of inconsistencies, it seems like, or a lot of confusion in what this means. I know that, you know, we were here a year ago where we had 140 homes put on liens with like $114,000 in utility rates. And I believe it was even specified that readiness to serve charge was not part of that. And at the same time of putting those liens, we started that ordinance of letting Lawrence Bay properties off the hook a lot. And so what I'm gathering is, when questions were asked whether these Lawrence Bay properties actually had readiness to serve charges, was told no, because there's not water mains. However, I'm confused by that, because the ordinance from 2015 also states that for Lawrence Bay properties, that they would... The agreement, the ordinance 19955, was to provide water service to the following described area with piping, fire hydrants, engineering, and all other contingencies required for a complete project. Pulling up the map that we have on our city website shows that the pipes are all within those neighborhood, that whole section of neighborhood that we're talking about. So I'm confused as to what that difference is. If by definition, that these monthly charges shall apply to all properties connected to the city's water and wastewater systems, regardless of whether any actual water or wastewater usage occurs during that billing period. It also goes on to state, these include billing operations, meter reading, infrastructure maintenance, capital investments, the costs that exist regardless of actual water usage, the charges based on meter size, blah, 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 blah. So I am guessing that's what special assessments are for, which is what we gave some, that 50% discount on, and what was owed. Because that does not go on to the developer, then goes on to who's actually buying the property. So we get off on that again in that scenario. So I'm wondering how everyone who is on this list can go about some of those same things about partial forgiveness, because it seems to be the same thing. I'm also wondering how the MTAA, who was just here a few weeks ago asking for money for some development, is on this list. How do they owe so much money? Like, how are we... What was dropping the ball here? I'm feeling like there's a lot of disconnection in what this process looks like, or people understanding what this process is. I've talked to a nonprofit today, went over to their property with them, because they were very distraught. I know that those discussions have happened recently, but also completely unaware that they had even... They thought they had no water main hookup there, at their property. So there is a lot of inconsistencies. And when I see that there was 114 properties that we were garnishing this money from, and it jumps to 792 in a year, where many people are unaware and owing thousands of dollars, I feel like we've missed a step. And this is going to impact a lot of people very greatly, particularly when we had, what, a 9.5% utility rate increase this year? Come on. You know, we have the potential of that occurring overall with averaging next week. A hearing will happen, and potential proposals for that. So I think we need to do our due diligence in looking at, where's the funds going from the revenue from the other parts of this in that budget, and making sure we're taking the right steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Delepp?
Let me hand out some paperwork to you guys. I said, let me hand out some paperwork to you guys. Clerk, City Manager. I'll go around the other way, too. I... Well, I hand it out. I'll let you go around first. Oh, you've already started the clock. Okay, now I begin. What I pulled out here is something you've not been given before, and that's the statute that they're trying to put liens on property. 1208C. I am very familiar with this thing. I was with a group that testified when it passed in the state legislature. What it says, look at the highlighted area in area B. A lien shall not attach to a property for unpaid utility fees or charges when the utility services have been contracted for by a tenant and not by the landlord or the owner of the property to which the service is provided. If you did not ask that water be turned on, you should not be paying for this fee. State law is absolutely clear on that. An exception to that, if you look down at number one, are rural water districts. And it has to do with the way water is financed in Kansas with infrastructure. In municipalities, we pay every homeowner's, well, since the lines came through, today's equivalent of $30,000 to $40,000 to have the water line running the back and the sewer line, and it could be built in the same location or not. Rural water district is not the same thing. That $30,000, that $20,000 to $30,000 is typically paid off of 15 to 20 years on special assessments. So they have paid their fair share. Rural water districts operate completely different. Rural water districts operate or get a loan from... First of all, you've got to define your benefit district. You define it. Then you find members who want to have water service out there. And once you get together and you think it's going to work right, you fill out an application, and essentially, you get money loaned from the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture, to finance these things. You then will purchase a meter. Interesting enough, you know, the meter purchase is expensive. It's like, well, I guess we mimic our cost to their cost, because you're paying, you know, $3,500, $4,000 to have hooked up to that line coming in front. Pays for some of the line and things like this, but not all of it at all. We mimic the same thing, because we were... They were getting more money than we were. In reality, those meters cost between $100 and $500, depending upon whether it's plastic or whether it's brass or bronze. Typically bronze, because brass contains lead. Now, you pay for it, you get your water. If somebody else wants to come on to that water line later down, they didn't. I mean, you can have a large area, and the next farmer that hooks up to it might be three, four farms down. Not everybody gets hooked up or has a right to come up. They'll only get hooked up if there are water meters available. They do this because they've got to guarantee a certain amount of volume and pressure. Now, if you don't pay your bill, or if a tenant doesn't pay the bill, they can put a lien on it. If you don't pay your bill, or you shut it off, fine. They typically don't charge you. A few may continue to do that. Most do not, because we've got over 700 in Kansas. What will happen, though, is if somebody else wants to come on to the system, they can take that meter and give it to them. Well, you know what? If you want that meter back, you may not be able to get it, because they've got to guarantee a certain amount of volume and pressure. That's why rural water districts are allowed to put liens on property. In municipalities, they are not. Why the City Attorney's Office didn't point this out to you? I'm clueless. I'm losing confidence in this. May I continue?
Pat, your time is up. How much money, time would you require?
Well, you always... Two minutes. I'd like more, but two minutes is fine.
Okay. Is there any objection? Two more minutes, if there is? Okay, two more minutes.
Okay. How this thing originally came about, the whole idea of doing this, was from our former City Manager, Stephen Wade. He hired a consultant, and the consultant was Capital Consultant LLC. I think it's run by... Geez, that better. They hired him for $49,500, just $500 below what they are required to tell City Council they did that. And they came up with all kinds of reasons for one department or another. Part of the reasons, they said incorrectly, we have 5,000 vacant homes, we don't. Well, you know what? If we start charging vacant homes this rate, too, we'll make these people that own the homes do two things. Either sell the property and get rid of it, or fix it up and rent it to people to reduce the homeless population. We can also do something else. You know what? We can take all of that money, and then we can use it as incentives to have builders start building in Topeka. And they estimated they could build $300 to $400 with this extra revenue from the RTS fee, and give free water and sewer hookup to people wanting to build in the city limits. It says it right here. These are one of a whole stack of papers I've got. And you can read it and see the type of money that going in. That's the real reason to do it. I mean, if you want to do this thing, the minute them... First of all, state law has to change. Second of all, pay the money back. Pay every citizen, the 20,000 to $30,000 they paid for all these things before that the rural water district does not have to pay for. That's it for now. There's a lot more, but... Yeah, I'm on the list. They put meters on my properties that weren't there before. They are charging... I've got a sewer line with six different people on it. And they charged six different fees, although there's only one sewer connected to it. It should be one fee split up six times. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, non-action item seven. Madam Clerk?
Seven A is a discussion related to the imposition of real estate liens on properties that have received utility services and failed to pay for such services.
Mr. State Manager?
Thank you. Mayor, members of the governing body, Sylvia Davis, our Director of Utilities, will take us through this item.
Traditionally, the utilities department comes before you once a year, usually in the fall, to seek approval of a lien ordinance to address delinquent utility accounts. Tonight, we are coming before you requesting a mid-year utility lien ordinance to address outstanding accounts, outstanding balances due to readiness to serve and stormwater charges. So to some of the comments made earlier, we have made it a point to keep these separate for that first year of the readiness to serve charges. So the list that we are going to give you, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that in a minute, is separate from other outstanding balances that may be impacted annually. When customer accounts become delinquent, our typical collection method is to discontinue water service until that customer makes full payment. We can turn them back on. However, in cases such as these, where we don't have service to shut off, we may refer the account to a collections agency or pursue liens on these properties to recover those balances. And as you can see by the slide, the lien assessment process is by far the most effective with a 98% average collection rate, as opposed to working through a collections agency, where we see a 38% success rate there. However, a lien can only be used when a utility account holder is also the property owner of record with the county. So the list that you have before you are all property owners, not tenants. The customers identified in this document are delinquent by at least 90 days and have a balance of more than $50. And on May 8, we began this process of collection by mailing letters to all of those delinquent customers to a tune of 792 utility accounts, a total of $446,933 owed. At that point, we start receiving phone calls, we start working with people. All of the customer accounts that are on this ordinance have been receiving monthly utility bills. If they do not have an active account, it'll be a separate bill. So that... Lots of notice before we get to this point. So May 8, again, we sent letters out. And then, when we placed this item on the agenda originally, as listed, we had 724 utility accounts to a total of 424,887. So between us mailing out those letters and then placing this on the agenda, we started seeing that number become a little less. And then, as this has gotten a little bit more popular, or people have... Word of mouth has spread, and they start calling, and we start working with them, we continue to reduce this number. So as of this morning, this number has decreased to 666 accounts, $393,627 and change. As customers are making payments, they may opt to remove their services. A change of ownership might have occurred, and we just need to get that recorded in our system, et cetera. We will continue. After next week, we will... Again, next week, before you vote, we will give you another updated list, because that number will continue to change. And then, the final lien list will be sent to the county on July 15. We will continue to work with our customers through that date, and then send the final list to the county for assessment. We do still plan on running our annual lien list at the end of the year for other account balances. Someone's water bill that hasn't been paid, sewer bill that hasn't been paid, that will come before you again, as it does annually. I might have some points of clarification, but I'll stand for questions that you guys might have first, and that might answer some of those questions.
Okay. Few questions for the director? Oh, sorry. I've heard. Councilwoman Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sylvia, I just went through this list. And I'm kind of concerned about a couple of things. I guess, number one, a church entity. Number two, I see one of my constituents that passed away probably four or five years ago. Not sure why she's on this list.
So we have had a few people call in, because perhaps the house was gifted to them or whatever those circumstances might be. We have had a couple of other folks call in to say the owner of this house has passed away. What we have is the owner of record and what is on file with the county. What we have is the owner of record and what is on file with the county. So in instances such as that, if we are made aware of those, we will work with that home, that whoever's talking with us and we will work with the county to try to clear those things up if we can, to the best of our ability. We, we don't always have that information. Uh, let me, again, I'm sorry, um, the point about churches. There are several churches on this list. Some of them, again, calling us, we've had several calls even today. Appointments are made for Friday for some of our team to go out and meet people on site. Sometimes, um, bills come in the mail. We just think, uh, you know, I pay it with my other account or for whatever reason, this charge is not valid. So I'm just gonna let this play out and see what happens. The fact is, this charge, both the readiness to serve for water and wastewater are part of the city's rate schedule. And as such, for the, since 2024 when it began, it is a current charge that we must place on all of those accounts. So if somebody can't pay, if there's a, if there might happen to be a affordability issue, we are happy to try to work with them to get assistance, work through our assistance program. So we're still doing that as well. Sometimes people don't know that those meters are still on the property. We will look up their accounts, we'll talk through them. Some not-for-profits have said, you know, we might not have used this meter for 20 years and they may feel very comfortable taking that meter out. Other people may not feel comfortable. I'm working on this house or I plan to work on this house and I don't want to take it out just yet. Again, we want to try to work with folks as much as possible, even to one of the, one of your constituents who emailed us earlier yesterday, spoke with her and just her question brought my attention to another account on this list where we were able to reach out to them too to say, not, not quite sure if you understand that you're on this list, but how can we help? We, we definitely want to help, especially for those that are unaware of why they're getting assessed and, and why or what those options are they have.
Well, I know, and I appreciate what, I can appreciate what you're saying, but when this first went out, I thought everybody got a notice that had it on their property. And, and I'm saying that because I, you know, I got several calls and I called you. Now, couple of, most of the churches, the churches that I know of, they're pretty reputable. I'm not gonna say, well, they didn't know that this was this or this was that. I'm not gonna say that. So where did we kinda drop the ball? Um, and, and I, I, I can't, I, I think we need to take more than a week because there's some people on here, if I call them and talk to them, they're either not gonna know or they're gonna say they don't understand and I will lead them to you. I, 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 I think we need to do more educating. I understand what you're trying to do. But I will look up when one of this person had passed away. Her son passed away, her daughter passed away. But, um, do we, do we not research that? When, you know, I can, I can see two people on here that have, as I'm looking at this list, that have passed away. One within the last year and a half and, and the other one within the last five years. And, um, so, so however the house is connected or something, um, I, I mean, she does have heirs here, but, um, if the county, I guess, has let the house sit there because her house is just still sitting there vacant, I don't know if that's a good thing that we go off of theirs to kinda match with theirs because they're not updating theirs. Am I making sense? I did too mark, um, the MTAA because I just don't understand how, how they're, they're, um, a business and, and don't know what's on their property, especially after, um...
I did re, um, I did speak with some of our team today about MTAA specifically because I have the same question, how are they on this list? They have a couple of meters that they believe go to a building that is not theirs. So we need to follow back up with them to confirm. We have been out with them before to verify those meters and where that service is connected to. We're going to follow back up with them just to make sure that they understand why those are still being assessed. To the question about owners that...
Can I have one more? Just let me grab that one if I may, Mr. Mayor. How in the hell do we let this go on? Like these, here's one for five, 1,500. I mean, these are, I guess nothing gets shut off because there's nothing, so, so... But, but still, how do they get so high?
So, uh...
We just keep on and keep on and keep on and keep on.
Yep, exactly. Because this has been accumulating since 2024 January, that's why some of these totals are so large. That is water, not all of these have water readiness to serve, wastewater readiness to serve and stormwater charges, but many of them do. This, these totals also include those stormwater charges that are assessed. So depending on the property size and how much their stormwater runoff fees are, that is also incorporated into this. Um, on those, you, the governing body has been very helpful historically. Every time a property comes up on the list, on the lien list, notifying people, hey, you need to pay attention. I see your names on this list. You don't want this. Let's, let's figure out a way to pay your bill. So we very much appreciate that. And as there are 792 accounts, we're doing our best to try to verify all of those, starting from when readiness to serve charges were initially instated and trying to get those lots that don't even have structures on them off the list and, and remove those meters without that request being made by the owner. So, um, we're sending those bills to somebody, the owner of record. And if we don't get a return to sender, no, uh, bill back, if we don't get those bills back in the mail, we don't necessarily know that they're not getting to the person they need to get to. So we, we may not know. And once we know, we will try to work and see what we can do to address those issues.
Thank you. Let's, let's, uh, look at our process, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Bardiniakla.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of questions. So just to go back, because Oaklanders and some folks in North Topeka had called and then on social media, I just want folks to know there's ire out there. There's ire about the readiness to serve. It used to be called the base charge. Now it's the readiness to serve. It ended up impacting about 3% increase in about 2,950 more properties. I think it was customers, I think it was going to the readiness to serve. I'm gonna be really honest. I told you from the beginning that I was not going to handle this rollout, that you all were gonna handle it. Because to me, it was poorly executed, it was poorly explained. And what this is to me is a grab for money since we're in a shortfall. People are not happy about this. And in my opinion, because there's no way I'm gonna support this, I don't even believe the numbers. I don't believe them. I don't have any faith in them. Because what I see here is cruelty to a point. 90 days and you wanted to start attaching a lien. I do have an aside question though, because it, it looks like 30% collection, uh, happens when we send this to collection, 98% if you do liens. So does that mean what some of our most egregious, this is a side question to the city attorney, just for later on. Can we do liens against these horrendous slum lords? Instead of going through a collection agency which is failing to collect?
We do both. Actually, we have to first attach a lien or collect, um, uncertain cases, slum lord cases, abatement cases. That lien has to be on for a year before we can send it to collection. So yes, we currently do that.
Okay, so we'll have to discuss more on that. But I do have a question. Are the empty buildings downtown being charged as well? And I'm not professing to know all about this, which is seriously why I'm asking that.
It would depend on what building and, and who the owner is. So if a building has a, active service, they're using water maybe very sporadically, they're still getting readiness to serve charges with that billing.
Okay.
That might be very different from somebody who, most of the people, all of these people on this list, they don't have active service at all. So it could be as simple as I bought the, the property next to me and I didn't realize, it's been an open vacant lot. I didn't realize there was a meter on it. Or we tore the house down and we didn't notify anybody, so, so we don't know that. Sometimes it's as simple as that. Other times, it's a little bit more difficult to kinda dive in and see what's going on. But, um, most of these properties, when we say 90 days, that's the bare minimum for us to start flagging an account. But by the time we start processing and get to this point, they're well over 120 days. And many, I can give you a percentage next week of the, um, accounts on this that are over a year past due.
Okay, well, that separation would, would be beneficial. I'm still not, uh, supporting this at all. Out of everything other than Topeka Hotel, this is, the readiness to serve is what I have received the most emails from, the most upset from. And a handful of those, you and I and your staff went out and dealt with folks directly on their turf, on their terrain. And so I can just tell you that with, when Wade was here, we were coming off of a four-year utility rate increase. Then with a poorly executed program, in my humble opinion, we went into another four-year rate increase. Then on top of that, you know, this was part of the, the whole thing as well. Many people still do not understand it. I believe there should be some kind of formal, just for due diligence, more due diligence to the people. Instead of them having to call customer service, consider having some public meetings about this. Consider doing something after hours where people can attend and not just go to an NIA where there may be 10, 25 to the most people. Again, I am just going to vociferous, vociferously state that I think 90 days is harsh. I think that it's, um... If there is any way that I had the power to undo the readiness to serve, I would because all we keep doing is taking and taking and taking from our taxpayer. And even when it's explained to them, it's explained to them in one or two meetings where they're still not getting it. And it's not always them. Sometimes it's us and our inability to get to the level where those we serve are. So that's all the questions I have, but there's no way I'm supporting this. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Duncan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, we had a couple of things. I guess let's start with, yes, I know that this was technically called a base charge before, but we made what I thought were considerable changes. But I guess my question is, if people didn't pay the base charge previously, we never came back and asked for a specific exception to the lien process there. I guess I'm just very still confused as to why we are doing this separately as opposed to just rolling it into the one time a year since it's just part of their bill, just like any other usage. Why we're carving this out mid-year?
Good question. So, um, again, that was an intentional decision because of the volume of accounts here. A company that was the turmoil with readiness to serve and wanting to keep those things separate. So, um, a customer, again, can have several different properties and they're getting multiple bills. So, uh, we, we took a year and really tried, and we've done a lot. We have worked with, um, many, many customers to, let me see, right here I have, um... I have a lot of facts here for you guys. But anyway, we have, um, removed 470 meters from our system as we've worked through readiness to serve charges. So that's pretty significant. Again, annually, we would not normally, the, the just base charge would not have been applied. Even though our ordinance prior to readiness to serve, when it was just called base charge, we did not historically charge people, even though our ordinance said, you're going to be assessed a base charge whether you have service or not. That was not happening. And so the name change to readiness to serve was to signify, again, when that was discussed as part of the, the rate discussion, to cert, to signify the change and starting to apply that base charge to properties that may not be using their service but still have, um, meters and are still connected to our system.
So I guess here's just my couple of comments. I remember sitting a couple of years ago in our special utility rate meetings, looking at this specifically when it was introduced. You can go back and find it somewhere and I remember saying, this is not a great idea. And I expressed concerns about, to the point that was just made, not by, not by Sylvia Davis at the time, but other staff members that similar said, well, we've had this, we just haven't been charging it. And I remember saying, well, it doesn't seem right to penalize the public for our mistake. Uh, and that's what we did. I voted against this. I voted, and I expressed this exact concern at the time. This was gonna be an issue as we move forward. Since then, I've tried to talk to the staff a couple of times about if we could lower this fee. Haven't gotten any traction there. I've asked if we could have exceptions, whether it's for nonprofits, whether it's for, uh, certain hardships, et cetera. We haven't moved forward on any of that area. So I continue to be disappointed that we haven't found traction there. So, yeah, I'm in the same boat. I've never liked the base charge anyway or the readiness to serve because people pay for their meters on the front end. I mean, no, I did not pay for the meter in my home, but somebody did when they built this home and when I moved in. I bought it as part of the house and I've never understood why we're charging essentially for a meter that people paid for pretty considerably when they constructed the property. So none of these concerns from me are new, but I continue to have these same issues. I wish we could look at a way to reduce this, to do some kind of exceptions because I think the mere fact that this, that we've decided this has gotten so big that we have to move it to its own special mid-year request exemplifies the problem with this fee, not the problem with the people who are struggling to pay. It's, it's an us problem. And so I'll continue to look at ways to solve this issue, but I too have concerns here. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask a couple of questions, just to kinda understand what, what's happening. When we look at these numbers, what you said, I mean, the base, the readiness to serve is a combination of the water and wastewater minimum charges, right? Plus...
There are two separate...
Various fees.
There are two separate readiness to serve charges. There's a readiness to serve on water and there's a readiness to serve on sanitary. So if you are connected to sanitary, but you don't have water service, maybe you get it from a well or from a rural water district, but you're still connected to our sanitary system, you'll just get a readiness to serve charge just for sanitary.
Okay, so if we see one that's like 240 bucks, they might, you know, try to guess what's in these assessments. That might be somebody that only has a sanitary sewer.
Uh, you, maybe, but also this could be somebody that has, um, 120 days versus somebody that is a year and a half now because we're in June. Right? So these totals vary because of the length of time that that has been accumulating. If somebody was living in that property up until this last February and it sat vacant, they, there's the readiness to serve charge only.
And that, just, I've worked on this somewhat with you and you, and you know that. The readiness to serve charge is the same thing as the base charge, pretty much.
Yep.
Right? So people can just leave their water on and it's the same price rather than turning it on and off.
Correct.
You know, and then if they use it every once in a while, they're fine. So I think that's one of the things I've seen, just to, just for people to understand. If you do have water and sewer, then that does add up because it's four, it's 20 plus 20 per month, which is a lot if it's just sitting there, right?
Correct. And a distinction to be made, again, you can do with this what you wish. It's just kind of how things have played out as we've been trying to implement this program. If you and I have active accounts and we're paying base or readiness to serve charges and we don't pay our bills, it will go to a collection agency. But, but before that, you're getting charged late fees on top of that. Readiness to serve, no late fees have been applied to any of these readiness to serve charges.
Okay, appreciate that. But then the, the water runoff varies based on how much roof, roof space you have, garage roofs...
Impervious surface.
Uh, pavement on your, you know, driveways, sidewalks, pavement, right?
Yes.
So when we see these higher ones, like here's, again, I know it could be different, but what, what kind of charge is typical? Or what's the typical range for just that runoff?
It's gonna be different if you're residential versus commercial. So if this is a commercial property you're looking at on this account, property you're looking at, on this account, it's going to be different. Again, is it an apartment complex? Uh is it some uh commercial business that has a large parking lot versus a residential customer is going, um one of the accounts, I, I mean, we're talking, I should look up the existing rate, seven dollars. Stormwater charges are not a large-
On a residential, it's-
On a residential account.
It's pretty small.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And then in terms of sending those mailings, are those bills sent to the address in question, or do the owners have often a, a record of a different address? So that, you know, where I'm going with this is, are they getting the bills?
That's a great question. And we assume if they got this letter, they, they receive the bills. And if that is, we, we've had a couple of people challenge that. And as we have reviewed, the address that we have on record versus the technical address that the postal service has on record, s- there is a, a chance that that could be different. But in the instances where we've been challenged on that, it's been the same. So um the, the lien letter looks very different. It's a, it's a, it's an envelope that, that looks different from the sa- the bill that you would receive every month. And so that's a very good question. We, we don't know. We're just assuming um that if they're getting one, they're, they're getting the other if it's the same.
I was trying to figure out whether they were getting it at all. I mean, do the bills all get sent to the address in question?
Yes, the, the address and the owner of record. So let's say it, it was a, we might have a different name on the account, but if it's the owner that is a, tied to the property on Shawnee County registr- with the register of deeds office, that's where we're sending those letters.
Okay, so it goes to the owner's address, not to the property address?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to-
And, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Just wondering if they were getting the bills. I, I know it's kind of a downside. I don't know, with ninety-eight percent collections, maybe it's good, but you know, I, I had one guy once who said, well, it's, it's great. The city just kind of runs a tab for me and then I pay it once a year when I pay my taxes.
A- and some people choose to do that, right? So we, again, uh-
Kind of efficient.
It, it's like we've told some of our customers and some of you, if this were to change tomorrow, if readiness to serve changed tomorrow, it's still officially what the city's rate structure is. So these, this is the normal process that we work through as we're trying to uh-
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
You know, I remember being here when that happened. And just so everybody knows, right or wrong, it was a trade-off. It was, we need to get this much money in. We took the, we managed to make the lowest user levels even lower than their comparable-
Yes.
Rate per cubic foot or whatever it was for higher to try and really cushion the bottom level. But the money had to go somewhere and that was a choice. So we'll just have to look, if, if people don't want to do it, where we would move that.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Director Davis, uh as you know, many of us have probably had visits with you about constituents concerned about readiness to serve. I know that the process is what we decided to go along with, uh go with. Uh I'm wondering, uh when we start talking about these districts that, such as mine, that has moderate to low-income families all over the district, and I saw a lot of their names. And when they start to look at this list, to get the, get the lien, most of them are gonna say, I'll just see what happens. I'm wondering, when you're doing these things, uh this list, how are you feeling about our process? Do you think we could do something better? I know we can't just uh put this out there and allow it to develop and develop. And soon, uh we're gonna have people that's gonna be priced out, you know? So I'm interested, or uh I would really like to know how you feel about the process.
I will say that our team has worked really hard to implement a program that there was not a lot of, to be very frank, there was not a lot of thought about how this program was going to be implemented before it was proposed to you all. So it might seem easy to suggest something, but to put it into operation is a different story entirely. Had we known everything that uh we have, that we know now, we, we may not have proposed that. How, again, the same people working on this now are not the same people that proposed this, right? So we are, we're trying to implement this and, and work through some of these things. Um and also um remembering that there's a legal side to this. We have to be very careful about who we offer. Um I, I don't want to say discount, that's a bad terminology, right? But when, when we're asked to look at how, how can we help this customer or that customer, we have to look at, at how that um is applied to everyone. And that is difficult with a charge like readiness to serve when it was specifically initiated to impact everyone. On that note, we, we have correlated, again, our assistance program so that if you find yourself, if you are struggling financially, you likely qualify for enough assistance to cover those readiness to serve charges. But the preference is for us to work with these owners to determine if there is something else we can do. Do you really want this meter? Do you need it? Uh and, and here's the other side of that equation. Uh many, there are some people's names on this list because of affordability. But there's also folks on this list who believe that this is a bogus charge and, and perhaps might be waiting for it to go away. And from um an administrative perspective, it is the existing fee schedule, uh the rate schedule, and this is how we um recoup those unpaid balances.
Well, I know you probably feel, as many of the citizens feel, it's uh the city trying to, to make up some of the deficit. You know, I recognize, and I know everyone here recognizes, the hard work that you put in. And it has been easy for me to support most of, of the processes that you bring to us. But this one is gonna, going to be really difficult. Uh nothing to uh throw shade on your work, but you know, so many people are coming to us and not having good feelings and thinking about what uh Councilwoman Alcala was talking about, the money grab. That's how they see it. And when they come to us, the only recourse we have is to come to you. And to tell you the truth, I'm so glad my wife pays the bills at my house because I sure don't understand it. Okay? Thank you for the information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Vadi Vialco.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh just to let Councilman Duncan know, I will work with you in whatever capacity to get the information that you've been looking for because I think it's important. Uh the other thing is, is Director Davis, if the meter is removed, uh who does that removal?
The city does that removal.
Is there a cost for that?
No.
And if they want to get it put back in, who does that?
Uh typically, they have to uh put an application for service in and hire a plumber to do that work for them.
Okay, and do you have any idea what that range is?
We have been telling customers for the last year and a half, an average of three-thousand dollars. That is the cost of a plumber, and it depends on the, the line in question and the work that needs to be done to do that. But that's what we've been telling people as a reference. It can be less than that, but it could also be more expensive.
Okay, so again, I'm gonna go back to the concerns of just the continued increase that people are having to pay. Obviously, LMI folks, but I think folks across the city are all pissed off at the RT, at the readiness to serve charge. I've heard very few people uh, you know, have any kind words to say about it. And I continue to get un, I do not go looking for it, but concerns about expenses and expenditures in your department. Uh I don't go looking for that, it comes to me. Uh I have been told that I uh should not be uh perhaps uh talking to those individuals. Um but I will say that when anybody comes to me, I, I'm a representative, so I'm gonna listen. And if it's gonna help the taxpayer, I'm gonna listen. And if it's something that I have struggles with and concerns with, I'm gonna listen. So my final question to you, is your department independently audited by an outside auditor? I don't know, I'm asking.
No, our finances go through our finance department with the city, just as anyone else's department would be.
Thank you. And uh city manager, is there an independent auditor that we have that comes in and looks over each department?
We have an annual audit that is done by an outside auditor.
And who is that?
Um BT and Code. BT and Code, thank you, Mayor.
And how long have they been our auditors?
Um that, I don't know, ma'am. I have to get back to you on that. But I know that uh the last couple have been done by that company.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Mayor. Sometimes a bad idea is just a bad idea. This is, this is a pain in the ass and it's time to get rid of it. So what I propose is, we put this, first of all, I'm gonna ask the city manager to hold off on bringing this forward. You can do that or not. I'll just make that, that request. I want to put this into the infrastructure committee for discussion, readiness to serve. Uh let's start that in July if we, if the chairman is agreeable. And let's, I, I understand readiness to serve goes away. Uh does that lower our cost of doing business?
No.
It does not. So we're gonna have to make up that, those funds somewhere. But I believe we can figure that out. I know we're gonna start discussion towards the end of this year on what rates look like, not next year, but I think the year after. So that has to start. So what a great time to get rid of this. And I, if, I don't know if that happens, uh if the mayor can make that call, or the city manager, or we just put it into the infrastructure committee. But let's do it. Let's start talking about it. Let's get rid of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Miller.
Thank you very much. Um I won't go too far on it because we've been laboring on this for a while. Um just quick question. Uh the percentages of what we get back or what the recovery is when it comes to lien and collections. Um I don't really need a true number answer because it seems pretty clear that we would, we would get more of the funds back from the liens. That's obvious with the percentages, right? So I don't need an actual number. Um but that's, I think that's important for us to keep in mind. Um quick question, and this might be for the city manager. Did the council or city staff make the choice to do this?
It is in your city code, which is adopted by ordinance by the city council.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear because, because I, I find that we pit a lot on the staff when it's literally us who are making the decisions. So we can yell at them as much as we want to, but it's our guidance that they follow.
Not all of them.
Right, I didn't. I wasn't here. But what I'm saying is I don't, I don't want to yell at them and say that you, 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 when we are the ones who make those decisions. Okay? Third, I like the idea, won't pull in that bag and go into infrastructure. Does that have to go through policy and finance at all either? One committee's good?
Uh the city council can choose to direct a item to any particular committee, and then it falls by your committee rules that you have to address it within so many days and send it back.
Okay. Uh Councilman Duncan, would you, is this something that you think we should speak about on policy and finance?
No, it's the infrastructure committee's where it should start. They deal with that kind of stuff. We'll have a better understanding of how it all fits together.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Before I move on to-
Plus Neil seemed really excited, like he really wanted to take it on.
Yeah. City manager, did you have a response?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Um so what I'm hearing is uh definitely want to slow this down, this action down. Um I think that we have a great ti- uh while I do respect taking this to uh infrastructure committee, which I mean, we have the discussions there. Um I will uh bring forward as we're discussing our, as we're going through the budget process, I'll, I'll give you um a forecast of our utilities fund. Um again, this is not part of the general fund, um but I'll give you a forecast of the utilities fund showing if we didn't collect this, what we'd have to make up. Um I'm not saying that any fund is healthy in the city right now. Um but we, you know, we can come to you with options that if we were not to collect this, or discontinue collecting this for us the rest of the year, uh in twenty-twenty-six, um what we'd have to, um what we'd have to adjust or modify within the fund, uh operationally, uh whether it's capital projects or other kinds of operations, if you're okay with that.
Okay. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Mr. Mayor, I will bring my comments to the hard-working infrastructure committee.
Deputy Reer.
All right. So it was brought up earlier by uh Councilman Duncan about, you know, when the house was built, the, whoever built the house paid for the water meter. When the water meter fails for no fault of the homeowner, who pays to replace that now?
The city does.
Okay. Where does that money come from to replace it? And how much is a replacement? Like, if we were to have to replace one today, what is the cost of that?
I, I'll have to come back to you with a cost today of an average residential meter. Um it depends on size, but um what was the other part of your question? I'm so sorry.
Uh like, uh-
Where does the funds come?
Oh, where do the funds come? There you go. I'm sorry. Uh the funds come from our utilities accounts. So all of these rates that people are paying go into our water enterprise fund, our, our sanitary water, our sanitary enterprise fund, or our stormwater enterprise funds.
So in essence, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out if, if that service fee slash readiness to serve was initially implemented as a way to offset the cost of a new meter?
I think it's important to note that when the city comes to the governing body with a rate proposal, it takes a lot of things into consideration. Debt, existing debt, future debt, where we're at on replacement, um existing infrastructure. It takes into account um salaries. It, it takes into account inflation. Uh it takes into account a lot of things. And then we say, this is how much it costs to do business, and here's how we plan to recoup that cost. Some of it is in rates and some of it is in fees and charges. Um so a fee and a charge is, is set to try to um direct those costs to the people that are using that service. So a fee to connect is assessed to somebody who is going to connect to this, to the infrastructure today. That's on top of everyone else who's already connected into our system, which is part of this readiness to serve fee.
I'm just making sure we're not going too short-sighted. I don't want to be where eventually we're, we're getting so bogged down on costs of replacements because there are, some of our infrastructure, infrastructure in the city is, you know, a hundred years old, so-
Yep.
Replacement. And then we eventually, someone looks at it and says, well, let's pass that on to the customer. If they paid for the first one, they could pay for the second. I don't want that because that's a, a large burdensome process to maybe come up. You know, you said just to install one's three thousand, that's not including the cost of one. So um I'm just want to make sure we're, we're looking long-term and making sure we're not putting a larger burden on someone later on than a smaller burden possibly now.
Sure.
Because uh it's, it's an expensive endeavor to get into and, you know, I'm not saying I'm for this or against this. I'm just, I'm trying to look long-term and seeing what we're, how we're gonna survive as a city and also um make sure we're taking care of our, our, our citizens. Uh another big thing that kind of gets me is when people want to come at us for the water rates or this or that, I don't see or hear these people all at the same time at Evergy or at, at anywhere else, the Kansas Gas and things like that. We have to be able to do our thing here also. If we can't do our thing here, we're gonna have a failing infrastructure. If we have a failing infrastructure, you're not gonna have fresh, clean water. You're not gonna have sewage going away. You're not gonna have stormwater going away. So we have to look at ways to make sure we're covering the cost, what it costs to do clean, fresh water, to have your sewage go away, to have your stormwater go away and not flood your basement, flood your street. So this is not just, oh, we're, we're, we're putting on fees, it's to put on fees. We're trying to figure out ways to make sure that things are being covered. I spoke highly before about, we do a lot less sometimes than what cities around us do. Uh three, four years ago, there were cities around us that raised rates by fifty-plus percent. And so we, we are always trying to look at the lowest cost to put on to someone, but we- And so, we, we are always trying to look at the lowest cost to put onto someone, but we have to be able to make sure the infrastructure does not fail, because when it did fail, the one time, it could do the weather, everyone lost their mind. And one of the people fired and all that, and it was because it was negative degrees, and the line was outside. So, we are doing our best, we've only had, a- as, as I've been told, only one boil water order. If we start cutting our infrastructure, we're gonna be like a lot of other, other cities around here that we see on the news, like Emporium's One, that constantly has boil water orders. We have to do what we need to do to make sure we have fresh, clean water, our sewage is going away, being cleaned, and, and, and let go, and our stormwater has somewhere to go. Thank you.
Okay. It, it's clear, it's clear, city manager, uh, feeling of the governing body, and I would, uh, direct you to move this to the Infrastructure Committee, and I visited with, uh, the chair, Councilwoman Banks, and he said he'd be not glad, but willing to take it into his committee. And I would encourage the rest of the governing body, even though it's in committee for discussion, that doesn't mean you're excluded from still attending those meetings, or offering your opinions in those committee meetings as well. It's just a, a, a good way to get us, uh, I think, uh, on point. Some very good points were made this evening, so, uh, if you'll do that for us, I, the body will appreciate it. Okay? That's the last non-action item that we have. We'll move on now to public comment. Uh, for public comment, we have a Zoom, Martha Boatright.
I'm trying to come on, my video is being blocked by the person. Um, I was, I was not scheduled for general public comment, I was scheduled to speak, um, at the specific, I was scheduled to speak for the 7A action item, but I'll be honest, most of you guys said everything I wanted to say, so I'm fine with passing on that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Boatright. Uh, second person is David Peterson. David Peterson. David Peterson. Okay, he's not present. Patrick Dillap.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's all that we have with regards to public comment, and we'll move on now, uh, to the announcements. Uh, Madam Clerk.
Okay, there is a Citizen Government Review Committee meeting mar- tomorrow, uh, June 11th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, in the Cyrus K. Holiday Building, first-floor conference room, that is located at 620 Southeast Madison Street. And then we will go over to the June 17th agenda. Um, we do currently have two presentations. We have, um, three noise res- noise exceptions on the consent agenda. Councilmember Miller, I do have your district correct on that one this time, I apologize. Um, we will also have the minutes of the regular meeting of June 10th. Um, action items, we have a resolution setting an August 12th, 2025 public hearing date, per consideration of adoption of the project plan. We have an ordinance for the utility bill, real estate liens, but we are preferring that, so we will make sure to take that off. Um, we also have a receipt of the Citizen Government Review Committee recommendations, and then we also will have the ordinance, um, regarding the anti-discrimination policy. Non-action items, we have, um, two discussion items, one for a 2024 Uniform Plumbing Code, and then the Notice of Public Hearing for the City of Topeka on the Advisability of Deannexation of Certain Property. And that is all that I have for you tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Nothing for me, mayor, thank you, sir.
Okay, governing body. Deputy Mayor.
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Miller.
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Councilman Dobler.
I have nothing, mayor, thank you.
Councilman Duncan?
I'm good, thank you, mayor.
Councilwoman Hofer.
I do have something. I, well, Mr. Duncan and I were at the swearing-in ceremony for our newest police officer, so I went to welcome them to, um, the TFD, TPD. And those gentlemen are Kayden Blake, Jackie Finan Jr., Robert Mills, Bradley Prey, Trayvon Rainier, Kyle Rigan, Blake Guinegar, and Ezekiel Wood. Like always, it's very inspiring to go and see these young men get sworn in, and I got a chance to talk to a couple of them, and again, I'm very impressed, the group was a very good group, so I hope they have a long, healthy, and productive career with the Police Department.
Thank you. Councilwoman Heller.
Thank you, mayor, I was gonna pass, but, uh, you've reminded me, a, a few of us were at the Camp Courage, the Fire Department's Camp Courage graduation last week, and I've gotta say, it was a lot of fun. They, uh, the class was maybe a dozen young women, um, from a variety of backgrounds, and the experience was a week-long experience, to give them a sense of what it was like to be a firefighter, what the training was. They did everything from hazmat suits, to going up in the, uh, in the bucket on the fire, uh, the extension ladder, uh, rappelling down buildings, doing CPR. The trainers were all women from our department, and from companion fire departments nearby. They obviously did a great job, they worked together, the spirit was there, and one of the lead, uh, trainers was a woman who herself went through Camp Courage, and was inspired to become a firefighter. And already, one of the graduates had decided to go back to school in, in fire safety. So, it was, it was pretty exciting, and that's off to chief and the department for a good job matters, thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Cola.
Thank you, mayor. First, I wanna say, I don't know who wrote the article, let me look, Jack Harville. "Thank you for this excellent article about Kansas Appeal Court sides with tenant of McGinnis' own complex in Topeka." "Thank you to the Kansas Court of Appeals for their ability to see past what could be just all-out laziness, maybe overwork, by the Shawnee County District Court on an eviction case." "This decision is so exciting, because it's hopeful for tenants." "If there's any tenants listening, you need to know, we're gonna bring help here to Topeka, we're, we're gonna bring it." Amy Hyten, a vigorous, intense lawyer specializing in ADA, uh, but has a lot of experience with tenant landlord law. She has been, um, uh, coming along with councilmen, not councilmen, State Representative Alcala and myself, Amy Hyten has, to a number of meetings we've been having. We met with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, uh, who thought that the asbestos removal at Motive Power Place, uh, was sufficient. I wholeheartedly disagree, so did the five other witnesses that we had that saw what occurred. They'll be doing affidavits and putting that in the KDHE file, and KDHE basically, they had seven people there at the meeting, all saying, "We did everything that we were supposed to." That usually is the standard line. Then we met with KHRC, Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, to try to get an understanding of how there could be such abysmal failures with Timberly Apartments, since they are responsible for some oversight, and also what's occurring now at Motive Power Place. Again, there was a lot of CYA, but we should expect that, we should never not expect that, as elected officials. Um, but we believe that there may be some minor changes, uh, happening there. Uh, Amy and myself met with the Kansas Holistic Defenders, and had a really good meeting, we're meeting with tenant associations that have done aggressive work in Kansas City, and tenants, please know, the change in our culture of property maintenance, we're making headway there, it's gonna help some. HCI, HCCI is gonna help some, the city has been pretty, uh, specific on what they can and cannot do, so the rest is going to be up to activists, advocates, tenants, and I wanna come along for the ride. I wanna see what we can do to make the abysmal state of not all, not all multifamily housing, but we all know who we're talking about. And so, uh, currently, Amy Hyten is helping look into this, uh, decision that happened with the Kansas Appeal Court. Uh, you know, Amanda Stanley, our city attorney, has graciously opted to look into it as well, so I'm excited to see what it is that we can do. I just wanna make a brief comment, uh, I wanna tell, uh, the woman, who will remain anonymous, thank you for the email that she sent last week, about a incredibly misogynistic, vulgar, lewd comment, not only about myself, but someone else on city council, which I will not name, because that's up to them. And about, uh, my stance on, uh, the deep concern, uh, worry, uh, about what happened with the Dylan Wallstrom case, and, uh, the allegations, which I'm sure are true, that there had been, uh, nine shots that he received in the face. This person, who used to be a city employee on the Topeka Police Department, was not happy with my words at the city council. And so, there was a very kind woman that sent a screenshot, and there is no way that I can repeat this. Uh, you know, and this person, I get it, I get it, they have their First Amendment rights, we should value that in this country, because heaven only knows, we're struggling with it in some parts of the country. But it also is a little bit disconcerting that the city is defending him. So, you know, that's just the way it's played, uh, that's the way that justice, you know, rolls sometimes. Um, you know, we are aware of, of the heinous comments, uh, that, that he made, again, understanding, uh, First Amendment rights, and I do appreciate, Councilman Duncan, that you reached out and to check, to see if I was okay, thank you, mayor.
Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on Monday, we had our Way to Work Kids, so if you are in the building or around, our Way to Work Kids started, right, Monday? So, I'm always glad for that, so, we can put those 14-to-16-year-olds, that's my baby, and put them to work, and they can get something on their resumes, and hopefully, they'll come to work for the city of Topeka. I wanna say congratulations to Naya Ken- uh, Naja Kennedy, she made Topeka proud, she really, really did. Um, I've known, I went to school with her father, I won't hold that against her, but, and she was alumni, uh, very, very intelligent young lady, very humble young lady. Um, she doesn't get rattled by, by too much, so, um, just gonna let the council know, next year, I will be at one of those games, that'll, she'll be a senior next year, so I will be, we're gonna get a bus, and we're gonna go down, but, um, you know. Um, I think Miss, me and Mr. Banks, we reached out to her last year, we'll do that again, and see, um, she's just so, I've had a lot of calls, saying we need to do something for her, she's just so humble, she just, she just doesn't really wanna do anything. So, it's not us, it's, it's, um, it's, it's really her, just, um, just living the life. And, um, also on Saturday, this Saturday is Free Dump Day, um, at Rolling Hills, uh, Rolling Meadows, from 7:00 to noon. Um, and so, if you have any, anything that you wanna take out there, you, you are absolutely free to do that. I, I will thank all the people that were concerned, and called, the emails, and concern, um, and the Texas, uh, takes, takes a lot to rattle, but, um, you know, I just, I just wanted to, to thank those, and, and to let my constituents know that I, I am fine, um, I grew up, had people that grew up from the bottoms, and you know, we're always looking over our backs, so, it's all good, it's all good. I guess that gentleman has a right to say whatever he feels he has to say. I think the thing that bothered me the most was, I had people that reached out to see if I was okay, and there's been people, these same people that have talked about me, and said some disturbing things about me, but they reached out to say if I was okay, and, um, to God be the glory, whatever, you know. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything more about it, it is what it is. Um, just, um, just know that this isn't our first rodeo with this, um, there's been threats to each and every one of us, I don't take them lightly, I met with, um, Mr. Moore, um, talked about security, and, um, talked about how everybody should be going through security, you know, from the top to the bottom, um, because we just never know what's gonna happen, just never know, these are, these are difficult times, difficult days. Um, you know, sometimes when they see, what they see in LA, they wanna bring it here, or, um, even into Kansas City, so you just, it's, um, we've, we've got a lot of, a lot of people that are unrest, um, right now, and, and rightly concerned, and, and I understand that, I understand that concern, you know. That's why we really need to come together, and, and, um, for the benefit of ourselves, and, and that's, you know, I wanna, I'm on a, wanna model what they did in the bottoms, they looked out after each other, they took care of each other, they cared about each other, they didn't talk about each other, they helped one another. And if they had an issue with each other, they went to each other, and, um, and that just doesn't happen anymore, so, um, but, um, my prayer is, and I've got a lot of prayer partners, is that things that are not right, that they will be exposed, no matter who and what is going on, that, that God will expose them. Um, and I believe that's going to happen, so, that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. One more thing, I do wanna wish my grandbaby, uh, happy fifth birthday, last Tuesday was her birthday, I didn't feel, um, I could, I could really do that after, after all that discussion, so I do wanna wish her a happy belated birthday. Granny loves you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too attended the Camp Courage event, and was quite proud of all of the effort, uh, that went into, uh, putting the program on. Being a proud retired of the Topeka Fire Department, and not, I know that everybody think I'm a big deal, but I'm so, I was so excited to be there, to tell those young people what a big deal I am. And, it was, all jokes aside, it was really nice to see the joy in how they felt about a department that made me feel the same way, not just when I was a rookie, in fact, I'm thinking about going back as a rookie, if they'll happen. Chief says no. But, the pride I have in the job that I had on the Fire Department is unmeasured by anything that I've ever done, so, shout out to our fire chief, and the young people that helped put the program on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Um, I just wanna wrap, I'm gonna wrap up on a couple of other things. I won't speak much more on those, uh, issues that were brought forward by Councilwoman, uh, Valdivia Cola and Councilwoman Ortiz. People who express themselves in that way just get in the way of what we're trying to do as a governing body. So, we will take care of ourselves, we will take care of the city, in spite of those kinds of, uh, individuals. I do wanna comment on the Camp Courage as well, I didn't get to make it to the, to the graduation, but I was there to welcome the young ladies, and the thing that impresses me the most, and I visited with the chief just this evening, is that it's not that, just that they're trying to show these young ladies opportunities to be a firefighter. What changes in them in just one week, as the chief expressed, is their self-confidence in whatever they decide to do. Some of those young ladies show up there, and they, I think they're shaking in their seats for most of the morning, 'cause they don't know what to expect, and some of them, you can kinda, "I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna do that." But when it comes right down to it, they step up and do it, they, they see themselves as part of a team, they see themselves, uh, in a position that they never thought they had the courage, or the capabilities to do. So, that, as I think, is for me, the real heart of that Camp Courage, is not just whether or not we get young ladies like Ms. Droge, uh, who became a firefighter. But, to see those young ladies develop their self-confidence in themselves, and no matter what they do, as they stay here in the city of Topeka. So, again, congratulations on that program. Uh, I was able to attend, along with Councilwoman Heller, uh, I think, and others, uh, Councilman Duncan was there, is also, uh, for the groundbreaking, uh, for the Innovation Center. Councilman Duncan was there as also for the groundbreaking for the Innovation Center. I think it's important to note that there was huge attendance and participation by not just local supporters of the effort, but people from not just out of town, but out of the country. I mean, they came from, I can't remember how many country it was, maybe five or six countries that were here to see what Topeka is doing with regards to the Innovation Center, and want to be a part of how we're growing our variety of opportunities in the city. So, congratulations on that. And then this afternoon, we were able to attend, myself and Councilman Duncan, I saw him there as well. The, as they called it, glass breaking at Washburn University Campus for the new advisors' Excel renovation to the old Henderson Building. It was a different ceremony. Usually they have a ground baking or something like that. They actually had fixed it up so that some of the selected parties had the chance to pull down the window frame and door frame of Henderson on the northeast corner, and to get the construction started. And that'll be transformational because that's, that building, just about, probably in this room, probably everybody has had some opportunity to take classes or be in Henderson at one time or another. So, it really is a building that signaled the rebirth of Washburn after the tornado. So, it's significant to see that that's taking place under the leadership that they have now. And that's been going on for some time in the planning stages, but President Mazacek has really taken it to that next level, and that's just the beginning of a lot of other things that the regions have planned for the, for the university. So, I just wanted to bring those positive things up as well. That's all that we have in the way of regular business for this eve.
Hi. I just wanted to announce that there's a protest at the Capitol on Saturday, a peaceful protest. It would be great to see him if any are. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Pardon? We'll go into executive session. There's a reason for, there's a need for three executive sessions. City Attorney, if you'll read, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session not to exceed 30 minutes to discuss employer-employee healthcare negotiations related to one or more unions as justified by KSA 7543-19B3. The meeting will resume in the City Council chambers, this room. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberation. City Manager Perez and other staff he deems necessary.
Thank you. You've heard the need to go into executive session. Is there a motion to go into session?
Sir.
Motion to go into session by Councilman Dobler, second by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Take a quick, five-minute break, and then we'll go into session. Okay, thank you. We've completed our discussions on our first executive session. There is a need to go into another sec, executive session. If the city attorney will read, please.
The motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed 45 minutes to discuss personnel matters involving an individual employee, as allowed under KSA 7543-19B1. The open meeting will resume in this room in the City Council chambers. The following individuals will be necessary to assist the governing body in its discussion. John Deardoff and anyone else the governing body deems necessary.
Okay, you've heard our need. Is there a motion from the body? Okay, motion to go into executive session by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Dobler. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll immediately go into our second executive session. We've had discussions during our second executive, executive session, but see the need to continue and extend. If the city attorney will read.
The motion would be not to recess, the motion would be to recess into executive session for a time not to exceed 15 minutes to discuss personnel matters involving an individual employee under, as allowed under KSA 7543-19B1. The open meeting will resume in this round of the room of the City Council chambers. The following staff, members, or other individuals will be necessary to aid the governing body in its discussion. John Deardoff and other individuals the governing body finds necessary.
Okay, thank you. We need to extend, we've discussed this in executive session. Is there a motion? Thank you. Motion to extend by Councilwoman Hofer, second by Councilman Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, we are going back into executive session immediately for another 15 minutes. We've concluded our discussions in our second executive session. There has been no action taken. It has been determined that we will not need a third executive session this evening, so no further business coming before this body. The meeting is adjourned.